...gather information, pull up some key details, what's the main idea, what is being inferred. Next set of test questions are given multimedia. They actually have to watch a YouTube clip, they have to analyze some data tables, they have to look at some maps and answer some questions. And all of these things build up to the last part which is now write about it. Argue this point of view. Talk about these two different authors. So these three standards are directly aligned to Common Core in this part. The other value of, and again, we hear both sides of the camp, people are a fan of Common Core, they're not a fan of Common Core. Sorry my throat's getting a little sprained. These are critical thinking skills that we want all of our students to develop. The greatest opportunity we have right now, especially in reading, these are the same skills that kindergartners learn all the way through 12th grade. So for the first time, we actually have an opportunity to articulate specifically with our feeder schools about the skill sets that our students need. And we can do that this year, once we get our PARC scores, because the 8th graders took the PARC and the 9th graders took the PARC. So we can start having conversations about expectation and what does this look like in each of our grade levels. We've never been able to do that before because elementary schools took the ISAT, we took the ACT, and they were completely misaligned. So we have an opportunity here to really have in-depth conversation about teaching and learning and the skill sets that our kids need and bridge that gap between elementary. So our initiatives for this year is supporting the Worthy Target. We're starting some classroom walkthroughs. So in addition to looking, again, we're looking at multiple measures now. How are we improving reading and how are we improving these critical thinking skills? How are we getting students engaged in the learning process? So we're starting these classroom walkthroughs where we're going in, taking a snapshot of what's happening and what's the level of engagement, what's going on in the classroom? Are we seeing standards 1, 7, and 8? We'll be doing some document reviews and our teachers infusing 1, 7, and 8 in the classroom, not only through daily activities but on their assessments. Are we looking at opportunities for differentiating instruction? And if our teachers are struggling, let's provide some professional development about how to help them differentiate their instruction.
We're just starting to get teachers involved in the walkthroughs as well. Teachers and administrators can go in together, do an observation, come out and have some rich discussion about what they saw or didn't see in the classroom.
Training and monitoring of the student growth model. We've already put on five trainings where we're walking teachers through the new student growth model and how do I develop these classroom assessments that have a level of rigor that reflects that range of rigor so that all students can show growth. Again, it's not about hitting a magic number, it's about showing each student growing in that content area.
At the same time, 50 administrators, 40?
Does he fit?
Some number of administrators are also trained in the same model. So we'll be going in together.
We're actually implementing data as part of the teacher evaluation this year, so that's brand new. It's 30% of their evaluation. 50% will come from the reading test, 15% will come from their classroom skill test. We're looking at defining, not looking at, but we're continuing to define and expand career readiness. What that means is looking for more opportunities for certification. We have another round of students going through EMT courses at our off-campus at South Suburban. We have students going through pharmacy tech this year through South Suburban. South Suburban College has also started a makers lab, which is that 3D modeling, if you have seen that, that's kind of the new age technology. So we're looking at creating an avenue for students to get over to South Suburban for the makers lab and we're looking to build partnerships with industries that actually have makers and 3D modeling and try to build some internship connection. So looking at all these different avenues, because again, it's not just about preparing students for college, but are we preparing students for the workforce and where are those opportunities?
Each, we're building, has eight students working on the implementation of the one-to-one strategies, the iPads right now, getting some real hands-on experiences, customer service reps, problem solving, working with Apple. Another, are you going to be ready when you leave us?
That brings us to the implementation of the iPads as a new initiative this year and kind of working through the kinks, more positives than negatives coming with the one-to-one. Upperclassmen, that just opened up in terms of upperclassmen being able to purchase iPads. Teachers are excited about them, the students are excited about them. We've introduced new courses this year, so the digital literacy, which is a dual credit with South Suburban College, students can get three college credits, we're leading A or B in digital literacy.
Right.
For freshmen. Personal finance is new this year. Geology and astronomy are fourth-year science classes that we've implemented. And statistics is that new math course that we've implemented, it's also dual credit with South Suburban College. Yeah, so it's all of our initiatives and that's the list.
Break? Question? Break. Okay, take a few minutes. Thanks, Keenan Basie, through all that.
On the, when you talked about, when you talked about the average, meaning a comparison of the highs and the lows, are you saying it's not like a true mathematical average? Am I hearing that correctly? When you add up all scores and divide by how many there were?
In the state. Right. But when you look at that average number, my point was you, you're either, you compare yourself to the average. So if the average is a 40 and you're a 38, you're like, I missed the average by two points. But there really is no average, it's not a goal attainment average, it's just a number. So there are schools that, their 9th graders could probably beat the Illinois State average because they're socioeconomic and so, and some schools would never touch the state average. So that was.
So because they don't, usually when you, like if you think about it in terms of a test score, like a teacher gives an assessment and scores it in Master Management, it gives you an average and it gives you the standard deviation. So that means that by knowing the standard deviation, you can tell how many students are above and how many students are below. So the state doesn't report the standard deviation. So if the average score is a 70 and the standard deviation is 30, there are some schools that are at 100% and there are some schools that are 40%. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's kind of what we're alluding to, is you don't know what the standard deviation is above and below, so you don't know what that range of scores is.
And you'll see that when we talk about finances as well. The state of Illinois is a unique place that has elementary school district, unit districts, and exclusively high school districts. When you see an average of class size, you see an average of salaries or administrators, the state simplifies the average and calls everybody the same. So those numbers become obsolete. So you try to compare apples to apples and orange to orange.
And that, that was one of my other comments, was that the, so looking at the state average of cost per pupil, we're under the...
Well, that was from 2011. Yeah.
And we're over, because it's, it's a lot cheaper to educate an elementary student.
Right, so it includes elementary students.
Those are staff.
Where salaries are significantly low.
Correct.
And then the other kind of question is, I just done the ACT and I may have misunderstood what you said.
Okay.
I know you included an article about what is the future of ACT. Are colleges still recognized and...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Well, this is just a question of giving it to the entire student body?
Correct.
It's a funding issue.
Funding issue.
And it's between $55 and $85 a student, whether you add the writing test or not. We'd like to pay for all of our students to take it, but I don't know if it's, if it's nice for the students, it's a nice piece, but it's expensive.
Will we be able to offer the student to pay for it and take it at their home school?
You know, that's because we are actually, because we're registered, we're registered now as a national ACT test site, so if we don't offer the ACT, we can't be recognized. We have to offer it to all students, is my understanding of how it works. I don't know if we could actually do that.
Typically, ACT, the extra dates are Saturdays.
Right.
So I, my hunch is that we wouldn't be able to offer it for our students at our home school.
Right, to do it like on a Saturday, if they, you know, just so they have the comfort level of their home school to be able to take it as opposed to going to one of the surrounding schools.
Yeah, good question.
Still we have to supply it to ourselves for the lower-income kids when they want to...
You would probably have to open it up to non-District 28 students as well.
Yeah.
I hope that's a problem.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't say why not, but just so our district thinks that the average is supposed to go somewhere else.
That's a good question.
One more question. So here in state of Illinois, we're paying for everyone that wants to take it or we're paying for every, because it changed, we're paying for every student.
Well, right now, the state hasn't given their definitive answer. Right now, we're slated for every student to take the test, but the state's paying for it. If the state doesn't pay for it, then we don't know what route to go.
So this is not just students that are on the way, we're paying for every student?
That's what...
The state of Illinois is paying for it.
Was paying for it.
It was part of the accountability model.
Okay.
The state will pay for it. I highly doubt that the state's going to pay for that.
Because in different states, some states, students, they have to pay for it.
You're on your own.
You gotta take it.
There's a lot of educators advocating for it, but I don't see the state coming up with that money, 85 bucks a, for every junior in the state of Illinois, that's a significant amount of money.
So you think they, my move, move is just seniors?
No, I think they're going to be you're on your own kid, like they used to be before no chat about the iPad. Now, we can certainly do it locally, but that's a financial commitment.
50, 60, 10, 12, is it?
Yes, every student.
They can leave themselves to figure it out.
Good. And our numbers will go up, it'll be the only kids that'll pay for it, the ones that are going to college, the other kids don't affect them that. Interesting question. Off, stuff there, we'll be there and stuff. What are we doing, if anything, with our feeder systems, our feeder schools? What are we set up with them? What kind of collaboration do we have with them? Because obviously, that's our problem in a nutshell. I mean, if they're not coming in, and I do, you said there's a number here, five, they're coming in with a 15, right?
Right.
And obviously, that's an area that we need to attack. What are you guys doing?
Yeah, absolutely, and it's a great question. We have to keep in mind, remember in the past, they were giving the ISAT. So there was no stake for them to prepare students for the Explorer because they are being held accountable to a completely different test.
And the test measured different skills.
It was content, it wasn't skills-based. So we always had that issue in working with the feeder schools.
The other piece of it is, and the feeder schools are really going to struggle with PARC, because traditionally feeder schools scored really well on the ISAT. They scored much higher than the high schools did on the ACT because it was a different test. So there was this perception that the elementary schools were doing real well, they were doing real well on an ISAT test, but it didn't translate to the ACT. So the first time they took an Explorer is when they were doing their entrance exam in December of their 8th grade year.
So that's something that we've always had a struggle with, is, you know, their focus is on a completely different test and rightly so. They're being held accountable to that, we're being held accountable to the ACT. Now that everybody's being held accountable to PARC, like I talked about, we have the same playing field, if you will. The other struggle that we've had for years, if you count all of our private schools, we have 23 feeder schools that feed into District 28. And there are a variety of demographics, socioeconomic status, opportunities. Some schools feed into two districts, so we have to be conscious of that. We have some schools feeding into 230 and some feeding into 218. So we're always playing that balance of, well, you gotta work with us, but they also have to work with those other two districts. So that's always a dynamic. I will say that we have worked incredibly hard over the last eight years. We, and it's called BASAM, Bremen Area School Association. I organize monthly meetings with all of our feeder schools. I meet with assistant superintendents, principals, sometimes assistant superintendents, curriculum directors, whoever it happens to be. We meet on a monthly basis and we talk about these issues. How can we streamline and articulate, they want to help their students be successful in high school. 10 years ago, 15 years ago, we couldn't have these conversations. We had, it's a very delicate relationship because we don't want to come up and say, you're not doing your job. We have, this is a partnership, we're all in this together, these are all of our kids and we want all of our kids to be successful.
And the relationships are better than they've ever been.
Better, better.
How receptive are they to the data? When you do, without insulting them, are they receptive to, gee, Dad, we got a problem?
Well, now, like I said, now we're kind of primed because we're all looking at the same standards, the same tests. We haven't had that before, so we're kind of ripe to have those really in-depth conversations. What we've been focusing on right now is Common Core, next-generation science standards were just adopted, so let me speak about those. Two summers ago, we instituted a STEM academy for teachers. We had, I want to say maybe 40, high school and elementary teachers getting together to talk about these new standards that are coming out. This past summer, we had 100. We had 100 of our feeder school teachers, 65 of them were K-5, which we've never worked with before. We've never had them part that articulation process. But we got to the point where the 6th, 7th, and 8th graders were saying, we need help with K-5 because they don't understand the standards and they don't know what to do. So these are the partnerships and the conversations we're starting to have. We're helping them because we have to remember, high school teachers have bachelor's degrees in a specific field, they're biologists, they're chemists, they're physicists. Elementary teachers have a general certification, they don't actually have a degree in that science area, so many of them are intimidated just by the content alone. I don't know how to teach electricity, help. Absolutely. We're going to put on a workshop, we're going to teach the content and give you some activities that you can take back to the classroom. So that's what we're focusing on in terms of science. Now we're ripe to have that conversation with English because we'll have these common scores. And now let's talk about math, let's get the Common Core math on board because everyone's struggling with, what does this look like in the classroom? So that's what we focus on in our articulation meetings. We talk about placement, we talk about cut scores, we talk about opportunities.
Supervisors are involved.
Yes, depending on what the focus is, supervisors come in, assistant principals. The Panther Project, so this is another completely non-curricular thing, but our students go back to their feeder schools and talk to the 8th graders about, this is what it's like in high school, and transition some of the issues that we're having, and again, continue to bridge those gaps.
We also, the past couple of years, the thing where their teachers came to our questions and ours went to theirs.
Yes, absolutely. So in January, and we change it up from year to year, just like Mrs. Stern said, some years, our teachers go to the feeder schools and see what's going on in their classrooms, they come to us. Last year, we decided to move away from that and just focus on science. And getting the teachers together and talk about the assessments and talk about, how do I implement this curriculum, what's the new state test going to look like? And so we, we change it up because again, you don't want to, it's nice visiting the classrooms, but we want to get into specific teaching and learning practices.
Okay, this is a follow-up to that. The other area that I think is critical to student achievement is reaching out to parents. If you don't have the parent's support, you're not going to see the results. It's just my opinion. What are we doing in that area? And I've had conversations with Dr. Campbell about really emphasizing the power school, getting the parents involved, they're already sitting down in front of a computer phone and Facebook and what, all the other social media thing. What have we done in that area to get them more involved? And that question might even, you know, more directly towards the principals, I don't know, but...
Sure, you can start, start.
...laying out that or somebody. How, how do we attack the parents to involve them more in our students' educations?
Well, for us, I mean, we have the one, our research, our parent advisor that eats on a regular basis. Unfortunately, they're a small, it's a core group, people that come back and that be one of the junior bases. We're doing ACT and PISA, you can have these.
Excuse me, why do you think that there's a limited amount of parents that come to that particular function?
I'm not sure, because they send out school reach, we send out emails, a blast every month, it's on the website in terms of the dates, our dates have been consistent for the last few years. Just if it's not an issue in terms of their primary, if it's not, if there's something that's burning in person, they'll help it come. Sometimes we get a surge at the beginning of the year and then it kind of dies off. If there's a core group that's consistent. But, you know, as I said, we've had junior parent meetings, we do about reach in terms of college readiness, we've done our child meetings, talking about the fund that are available, we talk about, you know, ACT and preparation for that, why it's important. So, you know, we do those kind of meetings, we do school reaches, we do power school, power school meetings and have parents come out and get up to you and help navigate through power schools. We also, with our child funding, have tried to offer some classes, get parents into the school, like credit counseling or something like that, if they may be interested in or navigating the internet, so that we can get them in the building and once we get them in, they're tied up into it. So it's just, it's kind of hard to say. And then again, we have, like our students, we have different communities that are feeding it to us, and they don't necessarily always have transportation costs to the buildings. We've gone out, we've done caravans before the South Central Day of, where about registration and things like that, so it's ongoing.
Right. Without, without putting you on a spot, I'm wondering if you could give a percentage of your parents at your school that, that are involved right now?
Less than 10%.
Less than 10%? That are active, that you feel that are active in?
That doesn't mean they don't care.
That are active in their child's education?
I think there's, I think there's two different things. There's some, some kids or some parents that are active in the school as supporters of the school, but active in their own students' education, coming to parent-teacher conference and accessing power school.
They care, it's not a sign that they don't care for the management, school events.
How was your parent-teacher conference turnout?
That's generally pretty good. We get the first one, we generally do a much better turnout, and that's usually about 80%. But then the second one, we have less turnout. And that's typical.
That's typical of all four schools.
The other thing I was going to say, we also have a back-to-school picnic, we do a welcome to the teachers side, we've been on campus, so we make sure Daddy, Mom, and Daddy's mother sent to the side of the school.
I think a big piece of it too is finding what that connection should be. Are we looking for home support with their children? Are we looking for them being in academic support? Are we looking for them to be just comfortable and connected to the school? And I can say that that's where we kind of jumped off last year with our taking parent connection. We're trying to look at, make those connections and then let's see where those connections take us. Are we looking for connections that we want people, we want people to come and be comfortable for their own sake, if they have questions for their own kids, if they have a need, a specific need. We also reached out to our parents and invited them to come to the flyover. You know, we're trying to get, we're trying to get them, we're trying to provide them a resource. Shake a hand, introduce yourself personally, let them know that, okay, now you have a connection if you do have a question, if you do have a concern, you know, you're not just kind of an ominous person behind an email or something. And our goal at least is to build those relationships and then determine how best we can use those connections.
What about the, the students that, you know, are on the edge of falling through the cracks, okay? Because we all know these events, most of the parents that come out, their students are pretty good students, okay? What about the kids that are on the verge of slipping through? What kind of things do we do to help them get their achievement levels up?
I could talk a little bit about, about that. We, you know, we have our different assistance groups. What we do is we reach out to the parents also. So if you're meeting with three students, I have two students from my sophomore assistance group that I meet with, also reached out to their parents, our administrators have reached out to their parents and, hey, I'm going to be working with Larry this semester. If you have any questions, try to build that relationship. So we have, you know, the student at the top, we have a parent on one side, we have administrator or a teacher on the other side, and we're trying to work together to get to that student. So the common connection that we're trying to help their student, call us if you've seen anything, we're going to call you if you see anything. We may call the parent with the student in our office if we're meeting with them. Let's report back. Encouraging our teachers to reach out as soon as possible if they're going down or if things are going really well. And keeping track of those numbers to share with the teachers at different points of the school year, so they know that, hey, our goal might be to make one phone call each day, so that's five a week, if you make five a week, you know, if everyone makes five phone calls a week, you're going to have a lot of work.
And these are for the at-risk kids?
These are for the, yes. I like to think that, I like to also think that we're calling some students that are doing well, and sometimes those at-risk students are turning it around, so don't stop because it takes, a student just didn't start doing bad yesterday. It's kind of, sometimes it's a, it's a track, I mean, they've been doing, you know, not as well as they can for an extended period of time, so you can't just make two, three phone calls or you can't work with the student for two or three days, it's going to have to be extended period of time to pull that kid back in so they can see some success over a period of time. You mentioned, I want to kind of go to some of the things we do to reach out to parents. Just the other day, we had a Braves caravan, the parent meeting, snack and check with the principal. It went all right, we didn't have as many parents as we wanted, but we tried to do something different and have one prior to our first honors assembly, because what we usually do is have it following the honors assembly, we have a short meeting and we'll walk around the building and visit classrooms with our parents. So our parents will actually visit a classroom while the class is going on, so they get to talk to teachers, talk to kids, the teachers showcase along with the kids, what are they working on in class that day. Sometimes a parent gets to see their kid in action and it's kind of exciting for everyone that's involved. And the kids are kind of, kind of need to see somebody else's mom, it might not be cool to see your mom that day, as we kind of find out. But the parents are really excited to see their kids in action and we want to be transparent. If you want to see your kid in action, come on in, we'll take you around, walk you around to see your, your kid in action in the classroom, because we want, we want to showcase the things that we're doing. I think our teachers have really grown comfortable with that situation now. When we started doing that two years ago, that was a little bit of a scare thing, they want, they don't want parents in the classroom, that's kind of, you know, it could be nerve-wracking. But now it's like we give this more of a welcome into the classroom, come on in, here's what we're doing. We visited seven classrooms the other day, kind of a wide spectrum of different classes so they could again, showcase the foreign language area, here's where your kid's taking it, it's French. Now we're in the Spanish class also this time, and just see the kids speak different languages. Again, it's cool for the parent then to be able to go home and have conversation with their child, hey, I saw a Spanish class, it wasn't your Spanish class, but I saw what you're doing today. Now you're stoking some conversation with your child. And that's what it's all about, is having an understanding of what's going on in school because everyone's went to high school. We went to high school a while back, we didn't go to high school, we're lucky to be in a high school every day, we can kind of relate to it a little bit more. If I wasn't in a high school, I might have a harder time to, you know, see what's going on, understand what my kid's talking about. So bringing a parent in, I think is something very good. We've tried to, or we are, we're reaching out to parents in different ways too. We've created a monthly now Braves bulletin that we're sending out along with our quarterly newsletter to parents. Totally different types of items, you can look on our website, our webpage for Bremen, you can see it says a Bremen bulletin, our parent bulletin, and it's kind of overview of what each department's doing, what are we working on, who to call if you're having this type of situation, want to do that in the first quarter, we'll do another one coming out here at the end of this next month. Again, trying to get parents to understand who to ask the questions too, because as a parent, you might have a question, but it could be intimidating of who to ask. So we want to try to make sure that we give these different avenues. We have a 40% population or 43% population of Hispanics. I don't speak Spanish, so how can I go ahead and help my parents who speak Spanish realize that we're here to assist them too? That's where we use, you know, the interpreters, we could use people to help, we're trying to translate more letters into Spanish. You know, yesterday talking to the parents, I asked the same question, how can we get more Hispanic parents to come to our meetings? How can we make them feel more comfortable so when we're walking around the classroom, we can have them here also? And again, speaking Spanish is going to help, so having an interpreter available more, at more events is something that could be helpful to these parents. You know, when you ask that question, you're going to get an answer, why might they not feel comfortable? A lot of things, anytime you call an Hispanic parent, you may need, you may need an interpreter. So that kind of limits sometimes our staff reaching out there because they may get intimidated also. So trying to create that situation where the staff feels comfortable, there's an interpreter there to assist them, and you can have a good dialogue with that parent. I've been on the phone with a, with a Spanish-speaking parent, and do you understand English? Oh, yes. Then I talked to the student a couple hours later and said, hey, I talked to your dad. He, he talked to my dad. Really? Yeah. He doesn't speak English though. Well, I didn't know, he answered my question, he said, yeah, everything's great. He knew enough to say, everything's great. So there's these barriers that we don't realize that are out there sometimes that we're trying to overcome, and only through communication and different types of communications we overcome.
So what would be your suggestion to get over some of these language barriers, maybe hire more Spanish staff?
Well, continue to use the ones we have. That's what we did this year. We hired, actually, we had an ELO position that came open for English and we actually hired a Bremen grad. She was teaching in the, in the city at a charter school and she came back and she's teaching at Bremen High School this year. She loves it. She's a Bremen grad. She's a Spanish, she's a Hispanic young lady. So, to bring her back as a, as what do you want to say, someone that our Hispanic kids can look up to and see that, hey, I can go to college. Wow, a veteran at college. This is great. Lives in the community and helps, you know, helps again, bridge that gap.
One, one thing I will say that all four principals have done is they set up an expectation of their teachers calling home. Uh, I've seen a real shift in that over the last couple of years where it was, sometimes they did, sometimes they didn't, but they've established, you know, we're expecting you to talk to your parents about academic achievement.
Along with the parent connection there, um, there's a couple of factors that I wanted to look at is how many are, you know, our percentage of how many children are latchkey children, meaning that they go home basically, you know, there's not a parent there. Um, then, um, how many of them have multiple jobs? And what time of day are we having, oh, I know I'm asking a lot, I'm correct back to back, but how many, um, how many, what time of day are we offering these programs to the parents?
I changed for that reason. I used to offer them at six thirty, six o'clock on a Monday night, the third weekend of the, a third week of the morning. And I stayed thinking that was the best way. Well, guess what? I got everyone who's off at six o'clock that could come. Well, then I said, hey, how about during the school day? Maybe some of these people are actually working, you know, during at night, the different, different shift jobs. So, now we do them at ten thirty in the morning. We also do them in the evening. We try to rotate them. So, it gives a more of an array of different people to be able to come and I don't get the same exact parents each time. And that's the goal. If I can get a parent to come twice during the school year instead of having the same parent come seven times, I'd be better off having, you know, two different parents come to two different meetings. So, trying to go ahead and change that up to facilitate mission parents.
And then another factor is, um, one factor is multiple jobs. You mentioned that. How is it with the internet? I know with this one-on-one program, a lot of students don't have internet access. So, you mentioned the paper, you know, you can send letters out.
The one thing that we do and I think we all do here is our IMCs are open at seven o'clock and they're open until four o'clock. So, I mean, our kids have the ability to come to the IMC and actually use the internet within the school. They're taught service. They can get on a bus before school to get here at seven. They can get here. So, there's two hours during the day that kids can use the internet. So, if they don't have it at home, they can at least be able to get things done within school.
There's also a reduced, the Comcast, Comcast rate that we hand out the registration. If somebody comes to us that qualifies for the free and reduced, they get a, I don't know what the exact.
But land dollars?
Yeah, it's free, or full internet that they're eligible for.
Um, no, really don't mind me just stopping in for a second. Um, the parents that don't have internet or are maybe don't like to check the computer, and I know power schools out there and it's there for parents. But have we considered printing power school or a progress report and putting it in with the mailing that just went out about sign up for parent teacher conferences? This way here, the parents are getting, oh, look, I can sign up for conferences and, oh, here's your grades right now. Maybe I've been paying attention or hey, you're doing a great job. But it's kind of putting the grades right in front of the parents in the mailing, a hard copy as opposed to, we're assuming our parents are checking power school when a lot of them maybe are not.
You know, often we get a mail from the end, we'll print them when they're coming. And then if anybody calls to request them, any time of the year, we'll mail them out.
Yeah, when you're sitting there and a teacher has them, but this might bother them.
The parents to conferences if they came with the mailing, just a, just a thought, just being a parent. If they came in the mailing with my kids, you know, it's going to be reporter, parent teacher conferences now. And then not only that, you're kind of mid-quarter. So, parents are looking at it and saying, the quarter's going to be ending in a couple of weeks, conferences are in a couple of weeks. You need to step up to this, you need to break, keep up the good work, you know, either way. Just a suggestion.
And just like our students change, our parents change as well, but having kids that graduated over ten years ago, you're still going to see the same parents. I don't, when things were mailed, I don't, we can try. I just am not anticipating a big influx of people coming because they got something to mail.
Yeah, the other thing.
Right.
Or we're already mailing out.
But printing out all those sheets and getting them in the right envelope.
Yep. But it saves a lot of our parents from failing to get their parents sent.
And that's, you know, how many people really are.
I just put it out there.
And we have to look at homeless population too because that's, that's steadily increased over the years. And, and it's sometimes I know with students, you don't, they don't have a steady phone number. They don't have a steady address. It's hard to keep up with them. Those are just some factors that, that I think influence how we connect with our parents.
We don't have the homeless in there, but each of our schools has a liaison to homeless parents. There are approximately about seventy-five on average, I think, in the last few years, seventy-five homeless kids registered in the district. It's been pretty good. So, um, they provide, each school liaison provide wraparound services for those kids, including, including school supplies.
Um, then I know you had mentioned, um, the culture, uh, the, the Hispanic population is about forty-five percent Bremen. And I know in this particular area, it's growing and maybe the next four, eight years is going to be more like seventy percent, uh, I believe, I mean, just from the projections that I've seen. And the, um, the language and the culture of, of the Hispanic, based on the, the parents that I've been interacting with, because I have a huge percentage of Hispanic parents. And literally the culture is like, the teacher is, you know, it's, it's, it's different than, it's different than.
They can show their kids behave versus how their kids do.
I totally agree. You're right about that.
Versus acting like, I trust you to do what you're supposed to. You're the teacher. And, and so it's, it's, I guess, hands off, less interactive. So. And then the other part of that, um, when I was in my classes, um, the other, other part of that is the, um, is the big, there's a big gap of the language factor, the comfort, you know, being comfortable with the, um, teacher, the student, the administrator. So, I'm glad to hear that.
You know, a couple of things too that are important to realize that, you know, the ELO programs have shifted a little bit. We have our own group of teachers that have been trained. We, we have our whole, a whole cohort of kids that are traveling together. Where before they used to just all go to old fours. We have our own services right here at Bremen High School. So, there's a group of teachers that have been trained. They've been going to classes and we started with freshmen and sophomores. So, we're up to, you know, four years right now at Bremen. The one thing I can say through all my years at Bremen and through seeing the shift of having more Hispanic students is that when I first started here, the Hispanic students did not speak the language. They were first, like the first group coming over with their families. Now, it seems like we're getting kids that have been, you know, in the United States a longer period of time. They may have been at the feeder schools a longer period of time. And when they come into high school, they're more fluent, they're more understanding of, of, you know, American schools and those type of things. Because I think it was more difficult, you know, ten, twelve, twelve, fourteen years ago than it is today. I think that the kids are more understanding of English and they're more able to participate in different things. Like, it's a smaller group that comes with, I, I think we had a lot more difficulty fifteen years ago than we do today with just, you know, speaking, kids speaking language and stuff. So, that the gap has changed. And I think our scores have kind of shown that a little bit, that, you know, they're more understanding of American schools, which is great. But that doesn't mean our parents are able to participate as.
It's still a disconnect.
Yes, there's still that little bit of disconnect. But they are very supportive. When you're doing an honors assembly or something, they come, they may not be speaking English or the language, but they're very supportive, very happy to be there, supporting with their kids. And, you know, you go to a Bremen soccer game, there's a lot of, a lot of Hispanic parents that don't speak English, but they understand the goal, just got to score with their kid. And they're pretty excited to celebrate with you. You know, and they know who you are and they know the athletic director and they're very thankful. Always saying thank you, thank you for everything, you know. So, they're great, great people. Absolutely.
I think we also understand more about how to support students with English as a second language and especially here at Bremen as we have more and more of those students. And as we have teachers retiring, we're actively seeking bilingual English. By the, up and coming next would be bilingual history, bilingual science. So, that we have people in each of the core areas to support those students as they're learning the target language. So, that's something that we're continuing to add each year is those different levels of support.
I have one last thing. This is just a plug in. ISB is having a parent university next. A meeting that they're having in October is called, entitled Parent University that actually addresses how to connect with the students and things like that, of that nature. That, um, it's going to be pretty interesting. It's going to be given to target how to communicate with your parents.
Debbie, I don't know how you want to do the question because I, I got some, I don't want to apologize, but maybe we can.
Just go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah.
Corey, this one's for you. Um, it's no secret to anybody in this room that I'm pretty outspoken about student achievement and obviously wanting you to move up the scale. And I'm sure everybody else in here wants the same thing. Okay? What would you do? Okay, what would be your perfect student achievement test for two twenty-eight? Okay, if you, you could take a second to think about it, you know, and what would be?
Student achievement test or after?
To show, okay, we know this state has flaws with their system. Okay? And my stance is no matter if there's flaws or not, that's the bar they're setting. That's what we need to strive to meet. Okay? If you had to make up a test and give it to equalistic kids for a certain class, what would you stress in that test? What would you be looking for? What, how would you measure the success of our student achievement if you could come up with that test yourself?
I don't know that I can answer that today because, I mean, there's so many areas you need to look at. Which specific content area, you assess all content areas and then which skill sets and then which grade level? I mean, that's why it's so difficult to create a state test that can encompass everything. It's, it takes years. I mean, it took two years just to get the park test together, a year to field test it, and it probably still isn't perfect. And it takes millions of dollars.
I'm not saying a state test, no. I'm saying you know our district, you're a curriculum assistant superintendent. You know this district very well when it comes to that. What would, what kind of a test would you come up with?
What you meant, well, let me finish my point. To create a test that's valid and reliable that will give you statistics and consistent data year after year, it takes an inordinate amount of time and it takes an inordinate amount of money. So, for me to say, oh, I think it should be a performance-based assessment is going to take time to develop, time to develop a scoring guide, making sure that it's representative of a content area, making sure that there's no bias in terms of gender and ethnicity. It's not something you can create overnight. So, I don't know that I can answer that question today.
Well, if you can't answer it today, sure. Send me an email at your convenience. Don't do it and, and put something else off. Okay? I'm not rushed for the answer. I just wondered what was going on in your head with that.
Is it fair to say that what we really looked at, that what the test is, might as well, we've always looked at student growth?
Yes.
Whatever the test.
Yes.
We can show growth.
Yeah.
That's private.
That's more than one test.
It's a variety of tests.
Because, because if you put one test in there, you're comparing apples to oranges. So, it, it has to be an improvement model. And frankly, we welcome the multiple methods because there's more than one singular data point. Whenever you put one singular data point in there, you're going to have multitude of issues.
It's important that students test differently. I mean, and the questions along are various. You know, they, like, you know, some people do that on a performance base. Some people do on, you know, got the book, do the answer in straight one book. It's just too many variables to, to really measure. Like, this is a perfect test for everybody because you've got just as many personalities as you do as tests.
And it's also just not one test. Truly to measure growth, it's I take each student and I test them over their course of the career. Well, imagine how much time that's going to take.
And that's all.
But this is, this is the struggle. That's why you can't look at one particular measure. You have to take that in addition to, let's look at all of the other pieces that we have.
Part of the evaluation model is going to require the pre-test, the midpoint and post-test, which will show, show growth over time.
Yeah, it's, it's exactly the struggle that we're having right now at the teacher level in their own evaluation. We've grown up, all of us have grown up under a system. We were trained under a system of attainment. So many kids get an A, so many kids get a B, a C, a D, and an E. That's not what this model is all about. It's let me see where you are on day one and my goal is to grow you by the time you leave me. And it's going to look different for every single one of us. That's growth.
All right, um, you know, we, we have put an emphasis on the AP classes as you stated in your presentation. We have a low, a low income, what, thirty-eight percent?
Forty.
Yeah, right in there, thirty and forty percent. I'm just curious. We took away a large part of our industrial arts program.
Who took away? Because no one took away the industrial tech program.
Well, it, it used to be much greater than, than it is today. Okay? I'm not saying that we totally disbanded or anything like that. But being in such a blue collar community with, with a low income situation, do you foresee us maybe hitting that program going again? And given these kids, since our emphasis is, you know, when they leave our school, if they don't go into college, that they can sustain themselves at maybe an apprenticeship, you know, electrician, a plumber, you know. Where do we have with that?
Yeah, and that's one of the measures that we're working on is expanding those career opportunities. Yes. Do we have some opportunities for growth in IT? Absolutely. We need to develop partnerships with local industries so that we can set up a career path for those kids to go to. We're looking at expanding certifications. We want kids to walk out of high school with multiple certifications to, even if it's an entry-level job, it's a start in a career. That's what we're looking to.
Okay, so our, our facilities that we have, okay, for the industrial arts, you know, back when I was in Hillcrest, you know, there was a, a survey of industrial arts. You've got to go to each one for a certain amount of weeks. Okay? And, and, you know, some of that stuff was very interesting. I'm just wondering if, you know, we don't get back into that and maybe get these kids fired up to want to pursue it further.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you kind of alluded to the students are choosing what they want to do. We didn't take the IT program away.
Right.
So, let's be clear on that. The students choose what classes they want to enroll in. Our job is to, let's analyze the current trends in the industry and finding the, what's new, you know? Construction may not be the current trend. Right now, what we're hearing, welding, manufacturing, 3D modeling, that's the current trend. We need to get on that bandwagon.
Well, I, I think what happened, and again, maybe that was a poor choice of words, that you didn't take it away. The demand fell off. But what did we do to help the demand stay where it needed to stay here to that five-year goal?
I want to say about five years ago, maybe even longer, in the elective programs, there was a course, a year-long course that you had to take. And you had to take a series of courses in order to hit the capstone course. So, what was happening was we're, we're pretty small schools and people were competing to keep kids in their industrial tech program, family and consumer science program for four years. What we advocated for was semester courses. We wanted kids to explore and touch those courses and get a diverse variety of courses. Our industrial tech program really felt committed to that four-year, year-long course program. Family and consumer decided to go with the semester model. So, what you see is the students have shifted over to family and consumer. We're actually a little high on family and consumer right now because I think they're into the semesterized courses. So, convincing our industrial tech program that you can, your kids are going to be okay industrial tech if they take a semester and not commit to four years of industrial tech. That's a shift that's going to have to take place. And we're looking forward to taking that shift. But over time, I think it's going to shift there.
You know, in my opinion, we're in such a blue collar community, I really do believe that would help the kids.
I think the semester, semesterized courses and touching it, and then you're going to find some kids that really love it, that will stay in, you know, but not everywhere. But you got to get them in first.
Yeah.
And they don't want to take that year-long course before they get to the tool stuff.
And you can't make them.
You can't get to the cool stuff unless you pass this.
Right. And then the old model, a lot of those capstone, capstone courses were two hours. Kids aren't, and they had to travel. So, now there are three hours of the day giving up to go and do this capstone course. A lot of the students can't afford to do that. So, they're not taking those classes.
Yeah, I think it'll happen.
We don't disagree with you. We have to analyze what we currently have and start making some shifts.
And believe me, I'm not saying that you're doing it wrong. I'm just, I'm just looking at our community as a whole saying, you know, look at what, we got to understand what we are. You know, and I think a, a good, strong program such as the industrial arts could help our kids once they leave our.
Well, and that's the key. It's also good we have a program. But if there's nothing for them to go to, what have we done? So, it's building the partnerships with the local industries so that they have something to go to.
The chart we have, your high school has given you adequate direction for planning in the future. And you don't have to give an answer on this, you may not have it. We have fifty-seven percent that say that they have... Do we have questions to the kids on what more could we have done for them? What are they looking for?
Dan, you want to take?
Sure. This is your area. Not too long ago, each of our high schools had their own guidance curriculum. And so, basically, you had a small group of people in each of the high schools deciding what they were going to present to kids and parents in terms of college program plan. In addition to that, there was no assessment of that program in each of the schools. So, a few years back, we implemented a district-wide guidance curriculum, which means that no matter where your kid goes, your kid gets the same curriculum. And that curriculum is developed by all of our guidance counselors and all of our assistant principals now. And what we've begun to do is assess our effectiveness. We've never assessed our effectiveness in guidance curriculum, college curriculum prior to about five years ago. And that data is showing that we're actually improving. If you look back, I think five years ago, we're at about fifty percent. We're now at fifty-seven percent. So, we're getting better. Does that mean that our guidance curriculum is perfect? Absolutely not. We know it's not. But I was just in a meeting last week with all of our guidance counselors, and they were looking at one of the lessons that they do for our incoming freshmen. And each one of our guidance counselors was evaluating that lesson and making improvements to that lesson so that our results continue going in the right direction.
Are we asking the kids what more do they, what more do they want? What do they think they want from that?
You know, I don't, there's, this is from our exit sermon. Just come, all of our senior students take this exit sermon, and there's about twenty-five different questions that they ask. I don't know all of the questions. I know, you know, there's similar type questions like that. There's one that is related to the coursework they took. Something to the effect of, did the coursework that you took help you in determining a post-secondary choice? And so, there's similar type questions like that. And again, we're tracking that data. Actually, I think it might be in this booklet.
So, we could use those questions then to, you know, keep making improvements in the next year, making changes to those programs.
Exactly. Every year, every year that guidance curriculum is evaluated, assessed, and then rewritten to plan. I think the other piece that's important to know is your teachers are with you for an entire year. You get to know your teachers. Your guidance counselor is kind of a random prophet. So, getting them to get that connection over the course of four years, it used to be they'd only see them twice a year around schedule, kind of. You know, so we're trying to personalize that more in here.
Sure, and I'm just more curious, you know, China, the kids are full of great ideas, the kids. And they, you know, they have a really great knowledge on knowing what could help them improve, especially as they grow over the four years. I mean, I have kids, obviously, you know, at various ages, and I talk to a lot of them. I'll even ask them questions. What do you think could have helped you better prepare in high school? And I hear a lot of things, you know, I know we have a big AP push, but a lot of kids just in average-level classes or even honors classes, they don't want to get into the AP rigor because they're in sports or they have to work and they can't keep up with the curriculum. And they say, in their average-class, I wish I was taught better how to write research paper. I wish, you know, math was pushed a little bit harder for me. So, you know, just by talking to them, and if it is the seniors and they're writing this down, it's just a great way to look at the curriculum that we're driving every year. Which brings me to my next question on curriculum. So, syllabus, I've heard this a lot as a parent, you know, teachers have a syllabus that they need to meet by the end of the year. Do we look at if we have, you know, maybe more than seventy percent of a class, any given class? It's kind of, you know, everybody's kind of on the lower end of the teachers scrambling to meet the syllabus by the end of the year. Can that teacher get with their supervisor? Can the supervisor intervene and be like, wait a minute, seems like maybe we're pushing our syllabus too fast? Maybe we can revamp the syllabus or not at all, you know, nine or ten, we're just not going to need it. So, we can focus on the kids getting the grades up, and now only thirty percent are struggling as opposed to sixty or seventy.
Yeah, and we do do that. We do, yeah, and they do that in their specific courses. They'll find, especially, this happens a lot if it's the first year of implementing a new curriculum. You know, we just came up with revision, now we're implementing that, and ooh, we really overshot. We thought we were going to cover all this, and we're only here. They readjust the final exam. And they can do that also class by class. If they see one class is significantly behind, they'll just take those questions and not count them in their grade. So, there is that flexibility.
You're doing it throughout the year, not leaving it for the, for the next year.
Yes, yes. And then... And we're constantly, kind of like what Dan alluded to with the guidance curriculum, we're constantly looking at item analysis and looking at questions and where are the kids struggling? Is it a good test question or was the answer key wrong? I mean, something as simple as we put in the wrong answer. Are we asking valid questions? We have too many distractors. All those things they look at and constantly revise those assessments that they're violating.
Can I interject for a second? That's where the assessments type three comes into play.
And it's going to be huge, kind of tackling the rigor question, you know? As we're delving deeper into raising the level of rigor, having a breadth of rigor, what teachers are finding is, ooh, I wasn't necessarily assessing at the higher level all the time. And I'm not necessarily pushing all of my kids. I'm trying to make it comfortable. And what we're saying is all students need to be stretched.
Yes. Not just the AP students, average-level honors classes. You know, we should have that same mindset for all those kids.
Yes.
You know your little group that's going to need that special attention, you know, all the time. But, you know, there's other kids sitting in those average-level classes that just, they need to be challenged more. They do want to go to college, so they should be given the opportunity for it, for the push a little bit more.
But I think a lot of that too.
Not forced into AP class.
Agreed, right. But I think a lot of that goes back to what Larry was saying too about the parents being involved. Because I have noticed that even me, because I'm on the board, not just knowing stuff, I'll tell my kids, the school offers this, go talk to this person, go talk to that. And they're getting so much more information this year than they probably were in their first or second year. You know, so I think again, it comes to those kids that are not in those AP classes also getting their parents more phone.
Oh, sure.
Getting that parent phone, that being a lot more than a call.
I agree. And I think too, you know, maybe an open house at each school, you know, first or second week. Gives, you know, just open that train. And I know, again, it's probably the same parents, but maybe it would bring out a few more. And maybe we had an area set up with all these opportunities so the parents can see that and then tell their kids, well, there are opportunities for you. Don't go over telling me you can't because, you know, you can't. And a lot of parents put it on their kids to find their own way and don't make a phone call for them, you know?
Can I go back to your question about too much curriculum? We really worked for the last four or five years on differentiated instruction, which really is our expectation that they adjust the curriculum up or down for each student. But teachers are working through this fairness piece that they were trained in. Everything's consistent and fair. So, getting them to understand and expect differentiation. And I think the other piece that is critical is the shift from content to standards-based. They're shifting to the standards, but they're still holding on to all of that content. We can advocate for giving up some of the content as long as you're hitting the standard. So, I think those two things are happening at once, and it's not going to be a quick fix.
Oh, sure, no one expects anything. And I think the decision, that is going to be a big help in trying to, you know, move all of this forward because you can be able to zone in on it a lot sooner than what if you had to wait for all your other data. And I just have a few more on curriculum. If you can answer to me, example, why do we have completion grades for math?
Okay, so the completion grade, especially now that we have even more and more technology, students can easily Google problems and get the answer. You can do that with any worksheet, any homework problem, any test question that you put into Google, someone will show you how to do it. So, it's, again, since we know that technology is out there, we'll give you the five points because you did your homework. I care more about, do you understand the process? And so, it's more of the practice. Homework is becoming more of a practice, and they're doing more of the intense, higher order in the classroom with the teacher providing support before they send them home and do the practice. So, that's why, you know, they're kind of using that homework more as that completion piece as opposed to, because they know the answers are out there.
Right, but do you not find it's a false positive on power school? So, it's homework, AAA test, D or C. Parents are like, what is going on? You're down today on homework, and you're not, you're not passing the test.
And that's kind of going back to what Dr. Kendall was saying, is we need to start shifting the mindset towards, let's give feedback on how they're doing on the standard, not necessarily just the letter by.
Right, because given a grade for just, you know, writing whatever on a piece of paper is, it's false for the, for the student, it's false for the parent, and what are, what are the kids going to learn?
Right.
You know, so that's a concern.
And I think the PARC test will help with that because the PARC test forces you and evaluates you on your thought process for the right answer.
Because that's for English and social studies, but math is math.
No, 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 you'd be surprised. It's no longer, you know, solved that X, you know, equals Y.
Really?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's one piece. Okay, you can do that. Now, take that and apply this to this, and then tell me why you did that. It's more short answer, which is an incredible shift from math to...
Oh, sure.
Huge. We have never...
Teachers and students.
Absolutely. Students were never trained that way. Teachers were never trained that way. They have no idea what it looks like. They don't know how to do it.
I mean, two plus two is four. There's no one to... PARC was a big, PARC was a huge part of it because not until February, I don't know about the high schools, but the feeder schools, for the feeder schools, it was like, what are we doing? Because it's a big, you're going from, from just a blank answer, what, to how? The process, the thought process of how did you get this answer? If I asked you, how, why, why did you get that answer? Why did you say two plus two is four? Why'd you say it's an absolute or whatever? Explain it to me. You have to go through that process on PARC. But on the ISAT, going from, this is why the tests are so different. You go from ISAT and it's just saying, wrote, memorization, two plus two is four, to how did you get that answer, two plus two is four? How do you know that? Why did you put that answer? And that's why it's just, it's like really huge. It's not, it's not the same anymore. It's like, not from the, the system that we're used to and where we came from. It's all brand-new to us in the sense that our thought process.
Kids aren't using that thought process on the homework. It's, I'm breaking these answers because I'm going to get them.
I think we're going to see a shift.
Yeah, you're going to see a shift.
It's not going to happen overnight, but it's deeply rooted in math.
In our, turn to the year, English, there is no honors English offer. There's only average and AP. Why no honors for English in junior year?
Because, okay, I'm going to have to go to, the principals jump in because I'm just having a brain cramp all of a sudden.
It's AP language, and what happens is they take it, and they can take it for honors credit if they don't take the AP test. So, it's actually an honors slash AP course where they teach the AP concepts in there. So, students can take the AP test and get credit for the...
Sure, but it's an AP rigor, correct? Versus maybe honors is not quite such the rigor, so it could be intimidating for students that just want to be on the honors track.
Sure, and I believe that the, the content is relatively the same.
It's almost exactly the same. So, actually, before, before the title changed being AP language, or before the title actually got AP in it, we were offering, we were doing just the opposite. It was an honors course that we offered the opportunity to take the AP test. So, when the shift was made then to make it an actual AP course, we were doing just the opposite before. Honors course where we offered AP option because we were just offering different testing strategies, hints, tips to be successful on incorporating these strategies from the honors course to take the AP test. The same exact thing is happening, but kids are now able to get that AP credit or the honors credit if they choose not to take the test.
If you run both sections, you may not have enough students to beat.
One or the other.
For a class, so if you don't want to offer two classes at ten, you'll get offered one class at one. So, it becomes a financial piece as well.
So, it's actually dual. It could be honors if you, I mean, the curriculum is so similar that they can take it as honors, they can take it as AP.
But at the workload, what about the workload of being in AP class versus just in honors? Because if we all know the workload in an AP class, even outside of school, it is a large workload versus in average or honors class.
I can speak in English just because Tinley had offered the AP option for a number of years before the transition was made, just because the, our honors teachers were already teaching almost the AP curriculum. So, really at that level, I know you're saying, different AP courses demand different levels of rigor as far as outside coursework. Some are just heavier than others depending on what you take. That's where I always thought we had our greatest opportunity because our students were already doing the work and our teachers were already teaching the content and the, and the skills necessary for them to be successful on the AP test. And so, when we would go to trainings and we would hear about this, that's how it was. Well, how are we not offering our kids the opportunity if they're already being exposed to, let's say eighty-five percent of what they need to be exposed to, to be successful on the AP test? And they're just getting honors credit, and they're not even being offered the chance to take the test. How about we just incorporate that additional fifteen percent and then offer them the opportunity to take the AP test?
It probably should be better communicated on a parent level.
I actually agree with you, and I've talked to several students who've had the same question.
Yeah, so a lot of the kids looking, they're thinking, oh, well, I'm not going to drop it into that.
Right.
You know, that's not where I want it to be.
And there's only a couple instances where we've done it. AP psychology is another example. We used to run honor psychology, and then we piloted AP and found it's the same curriculum except for two units. Why are we doing this? Let's drop the honors, and it's the same thing. If you don't take the AP test, you're just going to get the honors weight. Same curriculum, we just add those two units, and our success rate is terrific.
Right. And it was just more of an opportunity because our kids were already being exposed to, and I'm throwing out there the number eighty-five percent, it could be even closer to ninety percent. It was more familiarizing them with the design of the test so that they could be prepared for what they're going to see and how to tackle it. That was initiating the contact.
How many kids do you think we have that are shying away from AP courses just because they're afraid of the work? They don't want to do that much work.
I think it's the opposite. I think the counselors are talking to the students and they're encouraging the students, here's where your scores are, here's where your grades have been, you need to challenge yourself. What are your goals? Well, I want to go to college. Well, if you want to go to college, you really need to separate yourself, and you need to be in this class. And I think the teachers are talking to the kids also. They, they want these kids in our classes because it fills a class, you know, gives them a larger class, or maybe give them two sections of this, might reduce the class sizes if they have to. So, there's a lot of talk. And I don't think it's any of the principals talking to these kids and saying, hey, you need to take these classes. We need numbers. That doesn't happen. I think the teachers are talking to the kids, they're promoting the kids, and they're helping them to feel comfortable about going into these classes and taking the tougher curriculum.
Sure, but like you talk about in your community, you have a lot of kids that maybe have to support the family and have to go to work right after school. So, I'm just looking for the challenges for those kids that maybe they're very busy after school and don't have time. Maybe we heard the presentation from the kids about all the AP courses that they took last week at the board meeting. And they work very hard inside and outside of school. And not all the kids in all our communities have that time after school to devote to that kind of stuff.
I think they kind of make their choices though.
But if they have to support their families.
And then they may just take a regular level class and not the AP.
Right, and that's what I mean. I'm hoping to just see the push then for the college and pushing those kids in the average-level classes.
I think Dr. Kendall summed that up really well, is that we want that push in all our classes.
Yes.
And that's a new, that's, that's new. That's in the last seven, eight years. It's really, and that's kind of a struggle sometimes because that's, that's a big responsibility now for me to work, you said it too, to work with all my kids to their full potential. Not to just work on the kids that are doing well, to go ahead and look at my kids. I'm going to have three different levels maybe in a classroom. I need to push all those kids to a higher level. The higher kids, they're going to keep pushing. The middle kids, I'm pushing them up. The kids that are struggling, I'm trying to get them up. So, that's a tough job as a teacher.
Oh, sure.
Because it's not the same assignment for thirty kids.
Right.
I might have three different assignments going on any given day.
I think the other piece is, it's one of the downsizes of the size of our school. If our school was eight hundred students more, you could run another level of courses. If we had a layer of honors in there, we're, we're not going to maximize our classroom, class counts. It would be really too expensive, so you...
We also didn't have the space. We start running all those singletons.
You suffer on the honors, but our gamble was to put it into the AP. So, if you put it in the honors, you're just kind of putting a cap on your students because of our size.
And there, there was a student, I know, they did the work and they had to sacrifice and all that kind of stuff. My mentee that I had, we had, you know, we had mentees on the board when they did the student government. He actually told me his story. He helps support his family. Plus, he made, he happened to make a four-point-eight or something like that, it was very high, and, and took the AP course and succeeded and worked a job after school. So, it's possible. The motivation just needs to... So it's possible, the motivation just needs to be, you know, it's possible that the motivation might need to be there, um, and that's what goes to one of the questions I have about maybe also using the Panther, is that the Panther project that?
Well, we call it Panther projects, it started with Tinley, but each feeder school kind of has their own mascot, so I just quote Panther project, but that's the mentor program with the eighth graders.
That's where they go out to the schools, and I've seen that, and it's awesome, they're excited, they get the kids excited about the school.
Yeah.
So maybe get them excited to maybe some of the AP students, uh, involved in the Panther project to go out and say, hey, I took AP, I worked hard to do it, but you can do it too, you know, because it has great benefits, you know, I mean, if you if you really are struggling, like that student that, you know, you know, kind of struggling and having to work that job, um, this can help, you know, help your parents and help you, help you help your parents and help yourself in the same time by taking the AP test and and being exempt from these classes from college. I think if you incorporate that, I think that'd be awesome.
The other reality is these kids from low income that are going to college, ninety percent of them are going to be working while they're going to college, so.
Absolutely, of our allowances, yeah.
I think the other thing that Renee experienced was when she started her push towards AP, the parents were so afraid that their students weren't going to get good grades, that they said, I'd rather have you in the lower level and get an A than be in the AP level.
Oh, shit, I think a lot of students have that fear as well.
You know, there's a confidence piece that you, it's okay to be in, you're going to be okay at this higher level, so it's an education.
See, that's how I would get it too, then why are, why are you cutting all these remedial classes if we're not going to talk to students, push themselves and work hard? I'm sure what we had, like, intro or whatnot, and now we're making them take algebra, those kids are spending a ridiculous amount of time, probably equal to to the time that some AP kids will have an easier time of spending. So by by choosing lower classes, it just doesn't seem fair that then these kids, we're making them take this class, but this kid, I want to skip this because I don't want to do the work.
One thing that has helped the AP program as it's grown is our teachers are starting to communicate more across departments, because if you're a senior now and you have the ability to take six or seven AP courses, teachers are starting to find their niche within that system. It's kind of interesting because it'll force, um, in particular, our AP psych pass rate is the best of any of our classes in our building and maybe for the other schools as well. It's like a ninety percent pass rate. But he got to the point where the kids were making his class the last priority, so what he did was say, well, I'm going to get this even closer to college, your assignments are all optional, like, up to fifty percent of his assignments were optional, meaning you could choose to spend the time or not, and what he found was the scores actually went up when he did that. So he's even shared that, Mr. Holland has even shared that with his other colleagues in the AP department, saying, yeah, maybe you guys do have to look at the workload that's going home, because scaling it back might actually increase your scores to what you think would be doing the opposite. So they are starting to talk and share a bit more, but that could only occur once now the program's really started to grow.
It's like a true cycle.
And our AP chemistry teacher does the exact same thing, all of his assignments are are optional. He gives an assignment, if they want to do two questions on it, they want to do five questions on it, they want to do the whole thing, they need extra, he'll give them whatever they need. Uh, but that's, that's kind of when you just said about the completion, there is no completion, you complete what you need for your, to better your understanding and then it's assessment based.
Well, how do they give them a grade for that then?
Well, it's standard based grading, so he's, he's giving them a grade based on their meeting of the standards on the assessments.
So is it rubric?
Okay.
It's great about.
For the assessments or for the for the homework, it's more.
For the flight projects or homework?
No, it's all, there are no, it does not have a point value, very similar to what Brad was just talking about.
One of the cut the teachers that we met with, the AP teacher, which I really had been looking at a completely different view is this, uh, Porcino, is that it's really just how much do they improve throughout the semester, you know, because the way the tests were given and he's like, you know, you're going to see a lot of apps, you know, don't freak out, but really what he's looking for is, you know, out of ten, you know, it was the first test a five, but then the next test was a six, and it was the next test a seven, and it's really just measuring that growth is what he's expecting, you know, which as a parent was very hard for me to take in, I don't, I don't want to see apps on any of my kids' stuff, so looking at it from an AP standpoint, it was more about the growth of the student versus, oh, you got a high by a ten in this class.
And there's a lot of points chasers. You know, you, and typically, teachers that go into teaching were very good at school, they were good at chasing points, so getting them to shift their mindset to something different is a huge struggle.
That's where a lot of kids are too, they want to see their A's.
Give me those points, right.
But college, a lot of college courses that I recall, you have midterm and a final, and that was your grade.
Maybe a paper.
And a demonstrate.
Yeah, that was it.
Real quick, this goes with the keeping the disciplined students in the classroom, could you guys expand on that a little bit more? And I'll throw something out there, does this hurt the learning of the other kids around that disciplined student that's had the problems? I don't know.
I'm sorry, did I talk about the kid who's creating a disturbance?
I'm talking about.
This is about a kid who's been gone for like two weeks or suspended.
I like the philosophy, I like, you know, the kids can't learn if they're not in school, okay, if we're constantly suspending and and, you know, that kind of stuff, well, the kid's not going to learn. But, you know, what are the parameters? I guess I'd like, you know, I'm just asking, I'd like to know what the parameters are, if this is a repeat student, like, like that letter that we had gotten, that the kid acted out and then back in the class and then he acted out again, or she, I forget what it was, but what were the parameters for that? So we don't hurt the other kids' education around that student? I guess my thought saying that was our first course of action was remove the student from class. Okay. I'm not saying that we don't remove students from class that need to be removed, but it's not our initial reaction. Okay, I guess then my question is, at what point, what are the parameters that to say, okay, disruptive, uh, the rest of the class that, which in turn is hurting the the education of the other kids in class? Can you expand on that a little bit more? Well, I don't think it's a very clear black and white system, it used to be a very black and white system, if this, then this, if you miss detention, you get a two day suspension, if you have a phone, you get a two day suspension, if you had an earring, if you, that was, so now it's more. Let me throw an example out there, Bill, um, if if a child, a student's being disruptive, okay, not following the teacher's classroom rules, whatever they may be, okay, so he's sent out, okay, to the dean's office, okay, and then he comes back, okay, and some of that behavior persists. What I'm trying to say is that could potentially harm the other kids around him. He wasn't ready to go back? Okay, so, so is that up to our deans to make that decision, or is it up to our in-classroom teacher to make that decision? The classroom teacher decides who goes out. And, you know, we've never said you can't send a student out, but once a student gets out, we expect our administrators, our professionals to assess, analyze, and do what's appropriate at that point. It's not a cookie cutter recipe like it used to be. So it's, it's a judgment call, it's, you debrief with the student, you feel where the kid is, you use your loss of privilege system, you try to identify what works for that student. They're professionals, we expect them to think and work with a student and get us to a better place than simply hand out a consequence.
Yeah, there's lots of interventions then.
Some people perceive that as being weak, I perceive that as being much stronger than I'm used to. Yeah, and I've gotten several, you know, calls and people contacting me, and I've had discussions with you about that. Are you familiar with the bill that Governor Rauner signed? Uh, it's Senate Bill one hundred or? That's. We're there, where other school districts are, they have a long way to go, that's our philosophy. You, you do what you can, you work with the kids, you know they're coming in with issues, but we work through them.
Isn't that because a couple, uh, a few years ago, we used to have zero toms, and then we went from zero toms to, we can't do that anymore because it's just not working.
We never advocated for zero toms, I didn't buy the time.
Okay, and you're talking, okay, because I know we, if I'd been before, right before you came.
I think it's the old system that you're talking about, and it's been a shock to our current and maybe our little bit older, uh, senior staff that. Absolutely. I'm hearing this huge cry out saying, what happened to our schools where, you know, this and the other. Well, you think about, first the data, when, when some people started pre-two thousand one, there was no data. It was, if the kids are happy, I'm happy, doesn't really mean I need to increase my standards, there was no incentive to. You add a Danielson model where we're going to evaluate each part of your teaching rigorously, now we're adding data and we're shifting from content to standards, all at the same time, that education has completely turned over and flipped on somebody that started when I started, it's a different world. Does the classroom teacher ultimately have the deciding factor whether to remove the the student or not? Ultimately? Well, it depends on what you mean by remove the student. In this situation, if you're raging out, you're doing something, the teacher absolutely has the responsibility to remove you from the setting. Okay? Now, when that student comes back, is that determined? It may be a day, it may be, whatever it is, that's determined by the dean. So the the reentry, it used to be a recipe, if, if you were insubordinate, you were suspended for three days, no questions asked. And I got to determine whether it was insubordinate, I used to write it on the referral, you're being insubordinate, and that's it, teacher's work, now that's illegal now. So do we have a training system, behavior management training for across the board for our staff? We set expectations, um, we run data, and then we have individual sessions with teachers more than a global, a global training. So if we see a teacher. Who's raging out with fourteen referrals in an hour. Maybe our decision ed might help with that.
Yes, and that's what we do look at, because I would say, you know, we look at our evaluation data and we spent a long time, even prior to Danielson, if you make your environment positive and welcoming, your discipline issues go down. And so domain two, which is the classroom environment, is our strongest domain, it is the highest rating because we put a lot of emphasis on creating that positive environment for students.
Do our teachers, in your opinion, do they have those techniques to escalate situations to make a positive environment?
I do think most of them do. It's also in a very good time of the year, and I think decision ed will tell us that we, I mean, you kind of intuitively know, right before winter break, everybody's, you know, kind of on edge, everybody needs a break, so you see those ebbs and flows, you know, students have issues, teachers have issues, you know, sometimes we forget to check those at the door, we as adults can check those, sometimes kids don't know how to check those at the door.
I think it's, you see the same theory in AP, our AP teachers who are thriving now welcome you, welcome your challenges as an AP student. In the old days, it was, you're not going to make it, this is AP, I scare you into either behaving or not behaving. We used to do that with our freshmen, when our freshmen came to school, instead of welcoming them and making them feel comfortable, we said, you're in high school now, you're not in junior high, you better act like an adult, which alienated, scared, were little freshman students that were just trying to find their locker, so that friendliness, that supportive, we're going to push you, support you, and welcome you, is a shift, some people are behind the curve on that.
And then we had those two intervention, uh, those, it was, they had a model showing what they do in crisis situations, they had a little checklist, if I remember right, of, okay, it's not a formula really, but they say, okay, if you do this, and then they had a chart and it showed, um, Sarah was doing this or that or the other, and we're having problems, and then they, they intervene, you don't.
Your PALS program.
The PALS, yeah, PALS, PALS program, and they, they kind of intervened in there, so it's not just, I'm sitting you out because I don't like you anymore and, you know, I don't want you in my class anymore, it's, you know, it's, it's not that, I'm not, I see it as that, I saw it as being a tool for helping the student to.
To self advocate and to self monitor, I mean, that's part of this process too, is teaching students, recognizing their own triggers and what causes them to kind of act out, and then how do I self monitor so I don't get myself into trouble?
Referrals are simply information that there's a problem.
Yes.
We don't know where the problem is, who it's with, we have to gather information and try to solve that problem. In an older model, we knew what the problem was, it was the student, no questions asked. That shifted.
I have a question, um, I have to ask this, how are we assessing PARC, if so, you know, so, with the Danielson model, I don't create it, you know, kind of create our own with that, how are we, how are we, um, set it up? Because I know, I guess, the feeling from PARC a lot of them is on edge, kind of on edge, like, this is no, we got to think differently, we got to practice differently, we got to teach differently.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of our attitude walking into this first year of data, the data will be what it will be, it's new for everybody, we're just getting exposure to the test, um, there was not a lot of information out in terms of the structure, so now we got to see it and all we can do is improve from there. So again, once we get, once the data comes out, we'll start combing through it and understanding it, in the meantime though, we are trying to expose our students to those three main standards through the common assessments that we've created for teacher evaluation. So there was a team of teachers that wrote, there's thirty, actually twenty-nine assessments that are tied to standards one, seven, and eight, and they're all about reading in the content area and being able to apply that knowledge, because those are the skills that they're going to need for PARC. And so right now, um, the teachers in their September department meeting are actually analyzing the data from their type two assessment, um, in two weeks they'll be giving their midpoint, so we're looking for growth, and then at the end of the first semester, they'll give their post-assessment and we're going to compare how the students did. In the meantime, we're looking for areas and opportunities to provide professional development. Right now, from the data that we're seeing, our students are struggling on standard one and standard eight. The multimedia piece they seem to be doing well with, surprising, but we want to make sure that we're incorporating multiple pieces of data, they're really good on one piece of multimedia, but are we incorporating multiple pieces? Um, so what our test data is showing us, we're looking at Nuzala data, remember that program that levels? Nuzala is telling us exactly the same thing, level standard one is low and standard eight is low, so how do we start teaching that in our content areas and providing some PD? So we're already looking at that data.
Here's the other frustration, it's almost October first, we don't even know what the data looks like from last year, we don't know how it's going to be reported to us, we haven't seen, so making adjustments, you know, we're going to, it's going to take us a while to understand what they gave us and what that meant, to implement that, we'll be implementing it after.
Right, after the test.
After this test is being taken.
I think our, does that typically come out like in August?
It's new.
Well, it's new.
We don't even know what it is. The other piece, there's. It's out, isn't it? The state one is out.
While we're down the perimeter.
On the news.
Yeah. Well, and it's only part of it, because it's only the online testing that's out, all the paper and pencil tests are still being scored.
There were people, there were districts that decided to take the paper and pencil test gambling and knowing that their scores wouldn't be reported, because there's no way of processing the information.
I see that as being frustrating.
Yeah, that's, that's another good point, Brad, some schools tested freshmen, some schools tested juniors, so the data is like, you're going to get a bunch of.
At the elementary level, they told the kids, if you don't want to take it, don't go to school.
I think you're going to see more of that.
Many, many.
I think you're going to see a camp.
But on the other side of it, the students and some, I know some of the teachers, I don't know, this is from here, you know, it's like, is this test, is the initial test, I know this, don't worry about it, we're just trying to see how it goes, uh, some people felt like it was setting them up for failure, this, you know, students were very, like, they're used to the, they're used to the point, and they're used to the, this is what I made on, and I'm used to doing well, but I'm, I'm not used to accepting failure and, um, something that we know.
Well, we don't even know what failure means on this test.
What does, what does it mean?
And how motivated are you to make this huge shift if you somewhere believe that this may not be around you?
And now you're just trying to say, I mean, we're taking, we got, we got contracts, we got to take two or three years and live two, three years in frustration and not having a longitudinal study on, you know, it's just, it's been very, it's very stressful.
There's pieces of people that just hold on to this little, what this teacher has strategy.
Um, for our area, how realistic is it for, we mentioned, we mentioned the ninety-four percentile that the score were higher with the higher incomes, are they really in public schools or at that?
Are they really in public schools or is that after a hundred and fifty to two hundred or something, are they sending their students into private school?
That data was nationwide. And so, it didn't speak to post-secondary enrollment. It was just of the current students testing, what's the family income level?
Private, private schools take these.
Yeah, any.
So, it's all.
It's both.
Yes.
But our area is, from the, from the areas that we cover, we have such large gaps in, in there. I mean, we have anywhere from, I know some of the median income in some areas is thirty thousand and some of it is a hundred and, hundred, well, that's a million, maybe ninety to a hundred dollars, maybe, in, in other areas for our district.
Right.
So, how does that apply to our district?
Well, it's the same thing. We have to understand that.
That's natural.
It, it is natural, but it's also, I mean, we have that diversity within our own district.
The only, the only one that we met here is the loan back, it's twenty-four thousand in loans. So, we don't, just aggregate our data. We wouldn't even know the data of anybody that's not afraid to do this one.
Right. We don't ask that on any of our services.
Okay. Are you, remember the No Child Left Behind, there's a thing or something that's, that's coming out or they're bringing it out?
There's a reauthorization of ES eight.
Yeah, the on- to secondary.
That they're, they're struggling with. That's the old version of what No Child Left Behind is. What's, what states are doing is they're trying to figure out ways to access the federal So, it's all up for rent.